October on the Ohe neighborhood board meeting, we are called to order. First order of business is the filing of vacancies on the board. And we have two sub-districts open, Subdistrict 2, Winward Mall area, and Subdistrict 7, Pooahala. Is there anyone in the board from those sub-districts? I'm sorry. What does what entail? Serving on the board? Being a representative for your sub-district and then whatever you want to make it? Are you in? Are you interested? You are interested. I can see you are. District. Winward Mall, come join us. Once a month, are you interested? If you are, just tell us about yourself and why you might like to serve on the board.
Maybe because I care about our community. And I like to hear what people have to say and try to have good correspondence and answers for them. I care.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I think what we need to do at this point is, did you say seven?
I said eight. We have eight members right now. We need nine to take any official board action.
Can you go ahead and check the address to see if she's in the district? So we'll do some preliminaries and we'll wait for our ninth board member to show up so we can take a vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to city-state monthly reports, we have Honolulu Fire Department in the house.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Charles with the Honolulu Fire Department representing Kaniua Fire Station. Just going to go over our stats for last month. The statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the neighborhood board's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related mapping information, please visit the fire response map on our Honolulu Fire Department website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please email the HFTNHB@honolulu.gov. Information previously requested, there's a question asked and answered at last meeting and no further information was requested. Incident statistics for September 2024, under our Fire tab, we have one. Structures, we have zero. Wildland or brush, we have one. Nuisance, we have two, and nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside of a structure or vehicle. Cooking, we have one. Activated fire alarms with no fire, I include six. Emergencies, we have medicals, 96. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, zero. Motor vehicle crash collisions, five. Mountain rescues, one. Ocean rescue, zero. And hazardous material incidents, zero. We have fire safety tips and announcements. Our fire safety tip, smoke alarms, make them work for you. This year's National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit FPW, as in Foxtrot Papa Whiskey.org. Okay, first bullet point, install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Second, test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button. And third, replace all smoke alarms when they are 10 years old or stop responding when tested. Guys got any questions?
Hearing no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
They came as a pack. All right. Next would be Honolulu Police Department. Is there a rep? Online? Hearing none from the police, moving on to Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board and community. Kristi Kalohibo with Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Just a couple of updates, a few items from last month. When we had some inquiry regarding the brighter lights that are on the field. They have been turning off those lights, and so this is all to improve any sheer waterfall out that may occur. So that's been addressed. And another one was some concerns, in fact, it was on the news last night, Channel 2. The H3 speeding that many of the residents had written in. So there was a HPD as well as the Marine Corps PMO, they joined together. Major Paiva was a part of it, Mr. Sakamoto as well. And they interviewed Mr. Sakamoto last night, but they joined together and they had over 37 citations. I'm not sure of the number, but it was quite a number of speeders right on the H3 that is closest to the entrance of the base and Kaniua where they were catching speeders. So they're aware, they said that with the number of tickets that were given, that is apparent that the concerns of the community are are validated and they are being addressed. It was a good turnout. Just a couple of upcoming things, the base is going to host the Special Olympics in November '23 and '24. We are also going to host Hokulea as part of their statewide tour. And Hokulea can dock three locations on the Winward side. One man, I'm sorry, Teia, Mokoolea, and Mokapu. And they reached out and they asked, we want to be able to support with their statewide sale and their educational opportunity for the students in the Ko'olapoko area. So we're going to host some of the Guamanalo schools, a few of the Kailua schools, as well as Mokapu Elementary. Next month, we have a presentation, and I've left some of these flyers. This is an interactive website that addresses climate control. The Office of Local Defense and the University of Hawaii did extensive research and created an interactive website that shows and reflects sea level rise. Next month, the researcher will come and give a full presentation and show on the screen the interaction of the website. He can talk more about it. But there's two QR codes. One of the QR codes is a form to fill out that as you go on to the website and you utilize it and you see how it functions, if there are any concerns or questions or ways to improve it, they want to hear from you. So one QR code takes you to the site and the other QR code takes you to the form to fill out to submit any information that you'd like. And that's all I have for now.
Any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Let's see, two hands. Go ahead. Neil and then Donald.
Kristi, first of all, thank you to the Marine Corps and the Police Department for the efforts on the H3, but there were no tickets. They were all warnings and I think it was more like 60, not 37.
I knew it was high.
Yeah, it was high, it's a lot, but it was warnings. And so, but great, great thing. So that's a good thing. At one time had said that if we have problems, we'll fly over to call you directly as opposed to the hotline, which is kind of worthless. So do you want to give me that number sometime? I would appreciate it because about once a week, we're getting, that would be District 2, right down Haiku. We're getting jets flying over the mountain, right down Haiku, right, you know, like direct line to the runway, which I'm not supposed to do. So it's happening about once a week. So I sort of don't want to keep calling the hotline and leaving my name and phone number, knowing that they will not call me back. So, okay, thank you.
There is a form that I, I'll send it out to the chair. I'll send the form again. It's another QR code. QR codes are great because it minimizes how many clicks you have to do. But this QR code will take you directly to an online form where you can fill out all of that noise complaint with all of the information. Flight, right, flight path and all of the information about the aircraft or as much information as you want to give.
Okay, that would be the same information you would expect to get if they called you directly, is that right?
I think even better. Because it's collected and then it goes into a data system. So the form online with the QR code is what we're encouraging people to do just because it is a better collection. And I do read those.
Thank you. Donald?
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Kristi. As a blind individual, do you think I can get a copy of that email so I can test it out?
The email for?
This, what you just gave us.
Yes, and I have several on the table over here, but yes, I can send it to you.
Because I have a talking software that I use to.
Yes, I'll send it to you.
I'll check out your website soon. Thank you.
Anyone else for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? We clear on the, online? I have just one. I love the initiative of the speeding, but that was incoming. It should be set up also on outgoing as well. Because in my experience, coming out the base is when people with cars that have the ability to do so, that's when they romp on them. Is when they get outside the base and then they start working up towards that first lookout. And you have that nice long straightaway, even though it's hilly, it's still straight.
I'll take that suggestion back to the.
Mahalo. Thank you very much. Yes?
Thank you, Chair. Is it possible that the board could come and do an inspection with you of the base and all the improvements that have been made and the projects that are going on?
I currently ask the CO and request for a neighborhood board tour.
Thank you. Next, we had Department of Transportation on the menu. Sorry, the agenda. Now that that's been said, is there anyone here from the Department of Transportation? Okay, moving on to board briefs, we have a brief on the coconut rhinoceros beetle to be given by Keith Weiser, who is the Deputy Rhinoceros Beetle.
Close, Deputy Incident Commander of the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a presentation prepared. I've got too many slides, so I'll go through it pretty quickly. And then if there's anything that glossed over, then you can track me down later or go to our website to get the information that you need. So yeah, we can go to the next slide. So the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response is an emergency response program. We're a grant-funded program. And our mission is to protect the Hawaii's communities, industries, and natural environment from the threats and impacts of the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle. So just to be clear, sometimes we get confused with other organizations and other people. Now there's a lot of people doing CRV work at the moment. So for us, the funds are primarily coming from USDA, but we also get some Department of Defense funds and some Department of Land and Natural Resources funds as well. So that all gets given to University of Hawaii. And then the hiring is done through the Research Corporation of Hawaii for the staff. And then the CRV response, we're not state employees, but we're run basically through UH. So a lot of our management guidance, the workspace we have and our infrastructure comes from UH system. And then we work pretty closely with Hawaii Department of Agriculture, necessarily the invasive species committees, Department of Land and Natural Resources, Army Natural Resources, different county departments and stakeholders as needed. So we try to have data sharing and coordination with them, but we're not officially affiliated with any of those groups. So just to be clear about what my organization is and where the money comes from. So what do we do with our funds, with the USDA funds? We do treatments around ports and security of green waste around ports to try to prevent accidental transport of CRV off of Oahu and off of infested areas. And then we treat new populations where eradication impacts might be possible. Statewide outreach, events like this, school events, we have a website, we answer questions from the public, all kinds of things, a lot of things in outreach. And then we do trappings statewide for early detection, determining transport risks and determining how efficient treatments are, where treatments are being done. With the Department of Defense funding, that's all for Joint Base in the Waimea Watershed for treatments and green waste management. And then the DLNR funding is primarily for rare endemic plants like lolus protection and treating incipient populations in cases where USDA can't fund that. So that's the kind of things we do. So we don't do everything CRV in the state. This is pretty much, this is pretty much all we're funded to do. So why are we doing this? Why is CRV important? I think a lot of you already know this, but in case some of you don't, the CRV as adults feed on a bunch of plants that we like to have healthy coconuts in the name. But they also like royal palms, date palms, and fan palms. And then as secondary food sources, probably the first one that gets hit that's not a palm is hala or pandanus. But also banana, sugarcane, kalo or taro, sego palms, which are cycads, pineapples, ferns. And there's a bunch of other ones in there as well, but all of these are potentially at risk when the populations are high. So just a picture of what can happen to the palms. So when there's moderate damage, it can be a little bit ugly and the tree is less productive and grows less quickly. But when that damage gets severe, then that tree is in danger of dying. And plenty of trees on Oahu are dying right now. So I'm going to go through some biology and how to identify them if you've never seen one before or if you've seen some of the look-alikes. So it's typically got a horn on the front. That horn can be various sizes. The males tend to have larger horns and so these are pretty big. Most of them are about two inches and once they become a beetle, they don't change size, so they're always going to be big. When they're younger, they're on the right, they're the larva. And the larva range from a couple millimeters to almost four inches when you straighten them out. They're quite large. There's nothing that big on Oahu. So if you see a really large larva, it's probably a coconut rhinoceros beetle larva. And there's no patterning on these. They're just like a black leather shoe, patent leather, no patterns, color patterns. So the life stages here, they lay a bunch of eggs and a female usually lays between 50 and 100 eggs in her lifetime if she lives long enough. And the eggs are laid in decaying plant matter, compost, mulch-rich soil, stumps, things like that. And then they go through three phases, larval phases, we call instars, they pupate, metamorphose into the adult. And all that happens from egg through pupa happens in the breeding material. That doesn't happen in a palm. So they don't stay in the palms. That's an important point. And then as adults, they feed on the trees, but they spend a minority of their time in the palms. They spend most of their time in those breeding sites laying more eggs and reproducing. So the breeding sites are extremely important for management. But the palms can be an important component of that as well. Just some common look-alikes, the Oriental Flower Beetle is one that's all across the state and is very common. And it's active during the day as opposed to CRV, which are active at night. So Oriental Flower Beetles are a lot easier to see. They eat ripe fruit. They go to flowers and things like that. So we often get a lot of false reports of those and then occasionally reports of dung beetles, which look very much like a coconut rhinoceros beetle bird, are only about a half an inch long. So where did these guys come from? I'll try to go pretty quickly through here. They came from Southeast Asia and then they invaded several places across the Pacific and eventually into Guam and Hawaii. So for us, we first noticed them in December of 2013, based on the populations. They had probably been there for several years. Some Amalabe Golf Course is right by Honolulu International Airport and Joint Base Hickam. Pearl Harbor is the first place they were found. So for about 10 years, they were restricted to Oahu, but last year they were found on Kauai, then Big Island, then Maui, all within a few months. Similarly, just before that, they had moved to a lot of different places on Oahu. So they were originally near that with the airport and then they moved to Pearl City and they were fairly contained there. But once they moved to central Oahu, there's a lot of risky material that started getting moved around Oahu and around the state. And that's how they probably got transported to all the other islands and most of the parts of Oahu. So what's happening in your area? So you can see, we've had traps up since 2014 all across Oahu, including Kaniua. So these are not the positions of the traps, but this is just a graphical representation of the numbers of fine trap lines that we had in different parts of your district. So 2014 through 2019, there were no finds in traps. 2020 and 2022, we had one each and 2021, none. Then in 2023, when pretty much every other part of the island was exploding, it started to show up here, had 54 finds. And so far this year, we've had 95 finds in those traps. So you guys are still in the beginning of the impact. And this is a problem that's going to continue to grow in your district and across a lot of other parts of Oahu. So I already went through the host palms, so I'm going to go forward through that. So some of the specific things to look out when you're looking for damage and probably most of you have seen it, even if you haven't noticed what it is. These V-shaped notches that you can see on the right. And there's bore holes which happen at the base of palm fronds. So that happens when the damage is in the heart of the palm. Sorry, I might be running out of time here. And this looks a little bit different depending on the species. But here's an example of what it looks like on fan palms. So I'll go pretty quickly through this and then pandanus or hala on the left and then bananas on the right. Right? So the kinds of things that they're breeding in and where they're spending the huge majority of their life is in the breeding material, which chipped, chipped wood waste, whole green waste, compost, dead trees, potting mix, whether it's in a bag or in plantings and logs are some common breeding material, but really any decaying plant material, it can be good breeding material for them. So some of our recommendations is not to bring risky material to non-infested areas. Almost every part of Oahu currently has CRV. So the inter-island movement is the biggest concern, but if you're in an area without a lot of impacts, you still don't want to bring more beetles into your area. So when you're getting, especially you're buying some compost or you're bringing mulch from some other part of the island. If you can check that as thoroughly as you can, I know that the stores don't allow you to cut open the bags there, but maybe as soon as you get home, open them up and see if there's anything inside. And then manage your green waste. So the worst-case scenario for green waste is material that's sitting and doing nothing. So if you're turning it over and composting and searching it and telling it into your property and using it, that's going to be a lower risk. But if you just have material staged doing nothing, it's best to get rid of it or find somebody who can use it. And then treating the infestation, there are treatments for the palms. And the breeding site treatments, I'll go through some of those. So the ways that you can kill CRV, physical, you can crush, cut them or trap them. Heat, if you get them over 115 Fahrenheit, that's going to kill all the life stages as long as they're, you know, at that temperature for maybe an hour or more. Chemical, there are some select toxins, things like pesticides and some botanical oils and salts that can kill them. And then keeping the things they need away from them. They need moisture in their breeding material. They need palms or other host plants to feed on. And then that decaying material to breed in. So if you can get rid of as many of those as you can in your area, that's going to put stress on their populations and keep them low and reduce the impacts on your trees. So we have this on our website. I just wanted to say we've got a list of the kinds of treatments for breeding material that kill and some of the things that slow the population. So giving you some options depending on what kind of waste or what kind of material you're trying to treat. We do a bunch of treatments of palms, particularly as I mentioned, around the airports and seaports. So physical things like netting is a good pesticide-free barrier, but then there's a variety of pesticides that can be applied as a polier spray, soil drench, or injectables. So if you're interested in any of those, we can give you more information on any. And we have samples of netting. I didn't bring them tonight, but you can stop by our office or if we go to a meeting, we can bring some. And then community management is something that's becoming increasingly important on Oahu because there are not enough people treating to get this problem under control. And if only one person or, you know, 5% of your neighborhood is doing something, that's not going to manage the problem. Beetles can fly around to other people's properties and so everybody's got to kind of, or most people have to be on the same page. So we also have a guide on our website for trying to get some coordination across your neighborhoods to get good management. So QR codes were mentioned earlier. We've got a QR code and just some of the steps. I'm going to go real fast because I don't have too much time. We also have a state communications plan that gives a lot of good information about when you're talking about these things to your neighbors. Just having what the recommended best management practices are for infested areas, uninested areas, and for different roles that people have, homeowners versus nursery owners versus compost producers, things like that. Okay, so I think that's all I have time for right now, but our website is crvhyatt.org and then we have social media things. And if I've got time for questions, I'll take some questions.
Any questions?
Thank you for coming, Keith.
Yeah.
That was excellent.
I have a couple of questions. So you said risky material. You basically, there's no way of knowing when you buy a bag of compost or mulch or whatever at Lowe's or anywhere. They have a screen, they have, they're not required to be treated or anything like that?
That's a great question. So when you buy stuff on, for example, on Oahu, it depends where it came from. So if it was material that was made on Oahu, it could have been packaged with CRV in it. Most of the, a lot of the commercial potting stuff that we get, especially the bigger name stuff, not the local stuff, comes from the mainland. And then it gets infested once it's here because the mainland doesn't have CRV. So, but there are some signs when CRV enters a bag, they'll smell that soil and they'll dig into the bag. And when they dig in, they create a little hole and, you know, it's pretty common to see holes in bags, but they have to sort of press their arms against the bag several times to make their way in. So there's going to be little almost pinpricks around the edge of the hole. And it's going to feel a little like rail bumps all around a hole that's maybe dime-sized. So if you see that, that's an indication that that bag may have eggs or larvae in it.
Okay, so redwood chips would be fairly safe?
If they're not decaying too much, but it's any species of wood, as far as we've seen, can become food for the larvae if it's decaying. We've seen dead wood on a living citrus tree, monkey pod stumps, you know, pretty much any decaying plant matter can be breeding material for them.
Okay, and then the guide to the community management, is that on the CRV website or the HIS-C web page?
That's on the CRV response website, yeah. But we linked to the statewide communications plan on the HIS-C website from ours as well, so it's all a little bit connected.
And do you have any material, is this on your website, this whole presentation or is it?
Yeah, yeah, we can share that. All the information is on our website in some form. It's just not in the presentation format that I shared tonight.
Thank you. And that website that you're talking about, anybody from the community can go, yep. Okay, very good. Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right, let's talk a little bit about resident community concerns. Hi, Len. Len, did you have a question? If you have a question, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think, can you hear me now?
Sure can.
Yeah, that was a lovely presentation. As a practical matter, my neighbors and I have had this diagnosis made in several palm trees in our area. And when we tried to contact the Department of Agriculture, they told us to, they referred us to their website. But there should be a practical flow plan. Who are certain vendors? I mean, obviously the government isn't doing this, so it must be commercial vendors that may be able to treat your trees by whatever process is necessary, eliminate them if they're dead, as one of my neighbors had. That's the kind of practical advice the neighborhood needs. It's really not on your website. Do you vet the, like, for example, the people who make the mulch or that use the chippings? Do you vet them to see they're doing the proper thing to make sure the beetle is killed and larvae are killed? Do you have training sessions for commercial people who are going to be treating the tree, injecting them, or using other topical treatments?
Yeah, those are some great questions and we have some of that, but we And we have some of that, but we could have more. So what's missing now that you mentioned on our website is like a list of, here's some vendors that we know of that we've, you know, given good presentations to that we think are doing a good job. We've kind of hesitated on that because it's, we don't want to promote anybody's businesses. That's not the kind of thing we're in. But we do want to provide resources to the community. So we do trainings when companies ask us, hey, can you do, can you do a training for us? And also, you know, county solid waste branches, you know, we've done that on Maui County and private businesses like Hawaiian Earth Products. We've done presentations for them. So we do some of it. And it used to be in a more systematic way when the interim rule 22-1 was put forth by Hawaii Department of Agriculture. At that point, that required compliance agreements for, you know, compost producers and nurseries shipping off island. And there was a handful of businesses that had to be compliant. And in that, it required training sessions. And so, you know, we could say, okay, these companies have done compliance training. So with the interim rules that were passed in the one just last week and the one last year that was passed, there's no requirement for those compliance rules. So really, we're just doing trainings for people as they ask for them from us. So we're not regulatory, so we can't say, hey, you know, you need to do these trainings. So we just offer that resource to whoever wants to get it.
So if I have an infected tree, what do I do?
If the tree is not dead, you can treat it by whichever method is most palatable to you. I would recommend treating the trees and as much breeding material as you can control in your own yard, and then as much as you can convince your neighbors to handle. Those are the biggest things that you can do. Once the tree dies, it can become a breeding site itself. So once it's actually dead or you're pretty sure it's going to die very soon, then I would, you know, have it removed and processed. Composting is a great, is a great method.
I think one of the things that Len's asking, and I'm now also curious. Understand that you can't promote a business. But I saw a cardboard sign posted up on the telephone pole that said CRB removal and a phone number. I can't imagine that that's effective. Or it might be, I don't know. What are the chances of putting on your website the things that somebody should look for in a reputable company?
Yeah, we discussed that in a meeting this week. And that's something we should be adding pretty soon. We do have treatments, like these are the treatments that we've seen work. But a list of questions for, you know, whoever's doing the work for you, ask them these questions and, you know, make sure that they know what they're talking about and that they're using products that you believe work, you know.
Thank you.
Chair, question?
Okay. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Keith. Got a question. You know, years ago, we had the fruit fly and they sterilized the fruit fly. Is it possible to sterilize the same concept with the rhinoceroses so they can't breed anymore?
It is possible to sterilize coconut rhinoceros beetles. The only way that's been tested so far has been radiation. So you can irradiate them to a level that they're still alive, but they can't reproduce. The way that they reproduce, though, is with multiple matings. So it's probably less impactful than what Drosophila, the fruit flies work. So nobody's tried sterile releases, but we don't, we don't think that. It's not at the top of the list for, you know, the researchers that you H to test right now because we don't anticipate that it would be really impactful.
Len, were you done?
Yes, I am. Just a quick follow-up. Does the state do any of these treating, do any treating other than those specific areas where you're worried about export off the island?
Yeah, so the state has done some treatments. Mostly, they have done it on the incipient populations on other islands. For example, they were involved in the treatments on Maui after the first find there. So it's been just about 11 months since that find and no more have been found on Maui. So fingers crossed, hopefully, that that worked. They've been involved in some of the work that we're doing in Waikoloa on Big Island to knock out the populations there. And Royal Palm Drive, I think they were involved in some of the treatments out there. So, yeah, they can't cover the whole state either with the resources that they have, but they've been involved in some of the treatments that have been going on as well.
Is there any move for legislation so that the people are adequately managing the material that they have and the treatments that they're going to be used?
Yeah, that's a great question. Right now, there is a memorandum of understanding between the Hawaii Department of Agriculture, the Department of Land and Natural Resources, and the University of Hawaii. And part of the state plan that they're coming up with is supposed to have some guidance for legislators for, these are the kinds of things that we think would be helpful. That section hasn't been written yet, but that is a section in that plan. So nothing that I can share right now, but there is the intention that in the next session, there will be some asks. So there have been some past requests, things like, obviously, everybody asks for funding, but things like the bill on netting that specifies that netting is legal to use for CRB because there was some question there. So there have been, there have been some legislative actions in the past, but I think there is a need for, particularly on the green waste side. Right now, there are some laws on the books that are not really being pleased, things like the amount of green waste that you're allowed to have on a property, which is a Department of Health regulation. But I don't think they have anybody who's really checking up on that. So I think legislative action is probably the best way to go for that angle, that aspect.
That's the last question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Are you going to be around for a bit? Yeah, if anyone, any board members have additional questions, just walk over and ask. Fine. HPD, you have your report? HPD? Unmute.
Good evening, board and members of the audience. Apologize for my tardiness. I had some other important matters to tend to. Present the stats for September. Crime is basically unchanged other than thefts. Motor vehicle thefts remain the same at four, burglaries at one, motor vehicle break-ins at six, robberies at one. However, theft, common thefts increased from 17 to 23. Be willing to answer any questions at this time?
Donald?
Thank you for the report. Question about the Haiku stairs. There was on the news that some people were trespassing. Could you elaborate how many people were there and what was the process? And we had the 52 speeding on H3. We did have Kristi from Miripace give a presentation of what happened. But how did that, the citations amount, how did that go?
Yesterday morning, there were 18 people arrested on the Haiku stairs. So they get arrested for trespassing, taken to the station, processed, and if they can bail out, they're released with a court date. As far as the freeway operation, I believe it was 51 or 53 warnings were given out that day. No citations issued as far as I know.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Mahalo, sir.
Good night.
Night. Next, we have community concerns. Are there any resident community concerns?
Hello. My name is Yoseme. I'm actually a board member of Kalihii Palama Neighbor Board 15. My roots are in Kalihii, but my heart has been here in Kaneohe for the past six years. I've been going to CrossFit Kaneohe located on Alaloha Street. My concern is parking. And with that said, I would like to introduce our coach, our head coach, Steph Grams, who is a gym owner and who has some concerns of abandoned vehicles and parking on the street.
Hi, I'm Steph Grams. I own CrossFit Kaneohe. My biggest concern is all of the abandoned vehicles, the broken down vehicles, the junk vehicles that are on the sides of the roads. I run a business that requires people to park. We're not allowed to park in the mall. We're not allowed to park in the giant parking lot right next to the recycle center. So we only have the option for street parking. But this morning at 9:00 AM, there was absolutely no space. And just counting from Peia Street to the gym, there's at least 10 cars with no license plates or these giant junk trucks that have been abandoned on the road. And so it affects my business because now for I can't have people park and be able to come into my business, into my gym. Or new members, that can be like a big turnoff. If I can't park, they're not going to come there to work out. Right? So we're missing a lot of potential members and potential problems just based on cars that aren't moving. And there's plenty that have been ticketed many, many times. And then the tickets just disappear and the cars stay there forever.
Thank you. The mayor's rep is here in person, so he's heard that. Is that something you can take back, Andy? Okay. Thank you very much. And as long as we capture your name correctly on the agenda, we can, you know, get some information back to you as well.
One more comment, sorry, just a personal comment. I come from Kalihii Palama Board. And seeing this board, I love how involved the community is. Beautiful.
Mahalo. Did we get you? Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to say we live on Paheia Road. And where the new restaurant is, the Vietnamese restaurant, people park right on that corner. And their parking is down. And if you come out through the garage area, you can't see the car coming up. You can't see the people walking down if you're making that turn from the right-hand side. And it's a real safety hazard. I used to walk a lot with my grandkids. We don't walk anymore. And I have called Kiaaina. And I have called HPD. And I have reported the car, the cars there. I have requested that a no parking sign be put there. Nothing. No response from Kiaaina's office, nothing. It is a real hazard. If you take a ride down that road, you see it's like threading the needle. And with that restaurant there, of course, they got to run their restaurant. They have their own parking. But when the cars come up through that area to get onto the Paheia Road, to get out to the main street, a lot of times, there's another car parked there. It's like this on the corner, on the corner by the telephone pole. And it's a real hazard. Is there anything you guys can do about that?
Well, yeah, we can inform HPD. And you said you have, and they haven't done anything? No tickets? Because you can't park on a corner.
That I don't know because I call on my way home. So I don't know if they've done anything or what, but the cars are still parking there.
Well, we also have the mayor's representative here, Andy Colano. So he's now added more to his list. And I know counsel, I see Jaren McCartney is also on the call. So I hope you're all taking notes. And this is now added to our minutes. So thank you very much for that.
Chair, for the record, can I get the person's name for the minutes? Malani?
Haunani Kahel.
Thank you.
Any other community concerns? Yes? Two hands.
Hello, good evening.
Hello.
pertaining to home on 46133 Lillipuna Road, doing business as Aloha Oahu Weddings and Events, we're requesting an investigation into the home business by the relevant government authorities and agencies entrusted to uphold the peace and safety of our neighborhood. Our area is either R10 or R7.5 zoning. Activity began in 2021. DPP cited the owners in May 2023 as weddings and events are personal services not permitted in residential zone properties. Activity resumed this year causing noise, parking, garbage, and interpersonal disturbances. Failure to meet the standards of Land Use Ordinance Article 5 for home occupation, changing the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Only household members living in the home shall be employed. No outdoor storage of supplies. Indoor storage limited to 250 cubic feet. Negative impacts on adjoining residences. Inadequate parking for business and home use. Do the bartenders, servers, DJs, dancers, entertainers, photographers, videographers need to be household members? Does the kitchen used for catering need to be permitted, inspected, and provided a bill of health? They advertise catering on-site? Is alcohol permitted to be sold and provided by the business owner? Does the boat used to tour Kaneohe Bay or take visitors to the sandbar need to be permitted, regulated, inspected, and insured? Does the medium-sized passenger bus offered as a party bus need to be permitted, regulated, inspected, and insured? We have a photo and video evidence to share with anyone who requires it. And most impressively, the owners have a website and multiple social media accounts documenting all of their weddings, events, and boating exploits. Lack of enforcement enables bullies. What penalty or authority will it take for peace to be restored in our neighborhood? We have endured over three years of noise, lies, excuses, and arrogance. We're seeking a cease and desist order for no more weddings or events and commercial boat and tour activity from their home. We wish to peacefully enjoy our homes without competing with interlopers whose celebrations trump our right to a quiet home. If we wanted Waikiki, we would choose to live there. We're galled that they would choose to treat our community, some of whom have lived there for decades, with such selfish disrespect. I want to thank Representative Esther Kiaaina for her prompt and helpful guidance. I want to thank DPP's Kurt Higa and Don Takeichi Apuna for taking our concerns seriously. I want to thank HPD for answering our calls again and again. We just need help. Thank you to the neighborhood board for this opportunity. And we look forward to an update on our concerns at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm a little bit confused. You gave a lot of information. And you are thanking the council member. You're thanking the police department and DPP. And now you're asking the neighborhood board to do what?
I was recommended to come here to garner community support from the neighborhood board, directly from Esther Kiaaina, because she said that the DPP and her office is already aware. There are people who come to these meetings who have authority in other areas who might be able to help us.
I see. I see.
Because so far, they seem to ignore the citation that they already received that they were in violation and they're doubling down on their business and expanding it. They have a great website if you want to check them out.
Yep, so great. I think I even saw a testimony that was submitted on this a couple of days ago. So there's really nothing the board can do today. But because you've mentioned this, we can put this on the agenda for discussion and a vote to which way the board feels this should go. And hopefully, before that even happens, that the folks that you've already spoken with can move this farther down the road than we can today. So thank you very much for your information. Definitely appreciate it. And I wouldn't mind having a copy of that piece of paper that you have. Is that okay?
Sure. I can email it to you.
That would be great.
Is it possible to get your name for the record? Your name?
Name is Pamela Huber.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Are you with the same, are you with the same hui? Are you going to say the same thing? Okay, well, come on up and let's give it a shot. You're not going to read a dissertation, are you? All right, okay. Well, you got three. You get, you get three, you get three minutes to do it. I gave her a little bit more because she was concise. Okay, well, let's see what happens. Off you go then.
My name is Patrick Shine. Resident 46152 Lily Puna Road. Right, excuse me. My neighbor located at 46133 Lily Puna Road, approximately 1,000 square feet from my home, has been advertising and operating a wedding, special event, voting activities company from his home and property. And this is in a residential zoned area. I would like the property owner to cease and desist from conducting this business in our neighborhood. To paraphrase, the arrival and departure to these events of attendees, or friends, as the owner himself refers to his clients, negatively impacts the limited parking for the residents of Ali Shores and Huali Three subdivisions. Recently, attendees are shuttled to and from the event by a bus. Who authorized that? Food is being served at the events, catered or prepared on premises. Who authorized that?
We're starting to, we're starting to say the same things that she said. So if you can skip past that, if you bring anything new, that'd be great.
Sure, okay. Go to the end. Does only Order Fund Property in Kani Oe give this owner or any owner the right to ignore or circumvent the laws of our city, county, state, or his own profit? I think not. What it, in my opinion, this is, what a selfish, totally inconsiderate intrusion by this new neighbor to our neighborhood into the fabric of our well and long-established lovely neighborhood. I believe this company has operated inappropriately for far too long. I want the board or authorities thereof to investigate it properly and terminate its operation. I too, a conclusion, I too am a disabled veteran as the owner of 46133 Lily Puna Road. I too do not have the right to break the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Anyone else? Any other community concerns?
Hi, my name is Lisa Uesato. I'm from Windward Neighborhood Security Watch Coordinators Group. So I just wanted to let you folks know that on Saturday, October 19th, we have our coordinators meeting that's at Ho'on Maluia Gardens. And it starts at 10:00 AM. It's one hour. And at this meeting, the CPT will be doing a presentation on the Neighborhood Watch Program. So if you folks are able to attend, please do. Also, next week, Saturday, October 26th, there'll be two events. One is the Malama 96744, which will be at the Kani Ohe District Park. Everybody meets at the skate park. And all of the equipment is there. So all we have to do is volunteer. And this is a good event for students who need to do community service. Yeah, this is the flyer for this one. And then the second one is the National Take Back. Anyone that has old or unused pharmaceuticals at home, or if you know of anyone that has, then please drop them off at the Kailua Fire Department. So that's on October 26th. But our meeting is going to be this Saturday, October 19th. So thank you very much.
Mahalo. Antiraki?
Did you have a question? I just had a comment. Malama 96744 is a graffiti paintout. Go around the neighborhood and paint out all the graffiti that's out there. And they provide all supplies. So you don't have to bring anything except your volunteers. And it's a great program.
Thanks, Vice Chair.
No, it's not a complaint. It's a, I just want to make a comment. Last week, I went to the Makai Watch meeting at the Heia Kea Boat Harbor with the harbor master, Tanya Borabora. And since they hired, since they got the Makai Watch, they were able to cite six different illegal commercial businesses. And they were wondering, there's a business coming somewhere from Lily Puna Road. So I'd like them to hook up with Casey Ching. She's the charter of the Makai Watch. And they can, you know, work together on that. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Did you have another? Yep.
I would like to speak about the very, the cars that are really loud. Even late at night, this thing is super loud. And even those cars that play that music, boom, 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 and it shakes your car? And I don't know how their car don't fall apart with all the rivets and everything. But don't we have a noise ordinance? Don't we have, like, when you take your car in, our muffler cannot be loud? Is there nothing we can do?
There's, I don't think there's anything I can do personally, except for call the police when that happens. But by the time the police get there, the car is going to be gone. You're just going to have the noise that goes by. So it's a shame that people who disregard the rules and the laws that all of us abide by for their own selfishness. You know, it's kind of sad, but I think that's what it is. I don't know what the solution to that is. Maybe some of the elected officials or any other folks might have some ideas.
I had a couple of times when the police was right there in the lineup. And then they'll do nothing. I'm sure they hear it. I mean, you can't help but hear it. If I wanted to listen to your kind, I would be sitting in your car.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could make a comment. I mean, I think there's some online resources to report some things like this. So like abandoned cars, Kano 311 has a database that takes this kind of data down. And I've used it once before and the car was gone within three days. I'm not sure if there's something for noise complaints, but you know, we do have these complaints. It does take the witness to be a part of the process of citations. So I don't know if HPD has some kind of database you can enter the information, provide license plates or even your name and number two to be contacted. But that's kind of thing that needs to happen to build that database.
Complaint, I'm there. I don't run away. They ask me, oh, you're going to be there? Oh, yeah, I'm there. But you got to show up too, and you got to do your job, man. If you guys hear what's going on, you know, I know that they have a lot of other more important things to do. But if you in the lineup, man, come on, just get out of your comfort. Like, oh, brother, you got to turn that down.
Okay, thank you. Any other community concerns? Yes?
Hello, my name is Celeste Andrews, born and raised in Kani Ohe, graduate of Windward Community College, as I see artists in there as well. I just had a concern because it is coming close to graduation soon. Heia State Park, I believe, is undergoing, who's going to take over the contract there? I know Kiki Okaina had mentioned that December is the end of their contract. And I'm kind of just curious of who's going to take over. Because I would like to book a space because that's been home space for us to renovate or to even put a party, graduation party there. So I just was kind of curious if we can follow up and see where that progress is going with the contract for Heia State Park.
Can't you, can't you reserve a spot now?
Unfortunately, no, because Kiki Okaina will stop all of it at the end of December, which is this year, because that's the end of their contract. So they're still up in the air of where the contract is going under whose supervision. So that's kind of where the last thing I heard from Kiki Okaina.
Good question. We'll get an answer. Mahalo. Any other community concerns? Is that Chanel? So unmute yourself. That was Chanel. So you were talking and you may have muted yourself when you meant to be unmuting. Do you have, can you unmute? Okay. Let's move along then.
Oh, yeah. Can you, oh, yes, I'd like to make a comment, Chair, if you would allow me to.
Yes, please. Say who you are and tell us what your thoughts are.
Yes, my name is Brian Costa. I'm a lifelong Kani Oe resident and thank you guys for putting this meeting together tonight. I just had a couple of comments. You know, I heard the comments about the individual that owns a CrossFit shop on Hala Loa Street. And, you know, I'm kind of disappointed that I thought I grew up in a neighborhood where people are a little bit more considerate also for their neighbors. I understand her concerns for parking, but, you know, that's also an industrial area where I'm sure those are all commercial companies there. Then everybody's trying to make a living during this economic hard time as well and a slowdown in the economy. I'm kind of disappointed that the first solution is, oh, well, to go and give those other companies. And I believe that there's a toll company there on that street. And, you know, they're trying to make a living too. And just the same way that they have limited amount of parking with the CrossFit, you know, this toll company has been there forever. They also, I'm sure, have the same challenges. And I'm really disappointed that the first approach is to go to a board meeting rather than try to work it out as neighbors. I don't know if that's something that they tried, but I would like to possibly recommend that they consider that and remember why we live in Kani Oe and why we call this place home. It's not just, you know, the beautiful weather. It's mostly also the people in the community. And, you know, I just feel like this individual maybe is moving into this location and unhappy with her situation and kind of boxing the other guys around, it sounds like.
So are you, I'm going to have to stop you right there because you're talking about somebody specifically? So if you want to address a comment, you can address it to me.
Yeah, okay, Chair. Well, my, my, my comment is that it would be, I feel, a lot more appropriate if rather than certain individuals, bring it up to the committee, rather they take it to the neighbors. And I would ask that the board, you know, the Neighborhood Board, be also considerate of these companies that I'm sure are trying to make a living. Yeah, I'm also a small business. I own a mortgage servicing company. And, you know, we're all going through this economic hard time. So I just feel for this other company, you know, we don't know what their situation is. And if they might be going through hard times as well. I just feel that we should be a little bit more considerate of those individuals as well. Seeing that it is also in an industrial area. It is not in a residential area. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. All right, moving on to elected officials. U.S. Representative Jill Takuta. Is there a representative here?
Hey.
Kendra.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kendra Uishi, District Chief for Congresswoman Jill Takuta. We are a little tardy in circulating our newsletter. It just got finalized, so we'll be sure to do that. Just a couple of highlights from the newsletter. Representative Takuta co-led two bills that would support childcare, including a bill to assess the needs of early childcare facilities nationwide and provide grants for constructing or renovated, renovating those facilities. And also a bill that would create a student loan repayment program for early childhood educators. And also Representative Takuta's first bill, the Continued Rapid Ohia Death Response Act of 2023, unanimously passed the U.S. House of Representatives. And that bill would increase support for continued detection, prevention, and restoration efforts to rapid ohia death, including funding and staff for necessary research. And in September, Congress averted a government shutdown and approved a temporary funding extension that will last through December 20th. And just wanted to put in a final plug for our military academy nominations. We will be accepting applications until sometime a little later this month. I want to say October 25th for any youth that are interested in applying for military academies. And lastly, Congress is in recess this month. And Representative Takuta is out and about engaging in various activities and events throughout the district until she returns in November to DC. And thank you.
Next is a representative from Governor Green's office. Super stoked. Welcome.
Hi, aloha, Nui Kaku. I'm going to stand on this side, give you guys neck up. Break is looking this way all the time, but I can't look this way. Let's stretch them out, yeah? So Cherokee, Vice Chair Lamb, members of the commission, and all of you. Aloha, aloha, Kaku. On behalf of Governor Green, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke, they send their aloha to all of you. So my name is Ilihia Johnson. I am the Public Affairs Officer at the Hawaii Tourism Authority. But because there are so much great community engagement here on Oahu with our neighborhood boards, they divvied up the neighborhood boards amongst all the public affairs and public information folks in the Green administration. And so I'm happy to be here on behalf of the administration to meet with you all this evening. So, hey, how you doing? Good to see familiar faces. Remember Shizoma, remember Carstensen, and to meet new folks as well. So I don't live in Kani Ohe. I live on the other side of the Ko'ala'as. But I do bring my daughter here to school up in the back of Haiku Valley. She's a first grader. And so I get to participate in that small way in your beautiful community. So a couple of quick things. Keith, mahalo to you for that great presentation. The coconut rhinoceros beetle is such a big threat. And community vigilance is going to be key to it. Governor Green signed the bill this year, realigning the state's biosecurity initiatives, which were kind of in different pieces in different places. But that bill that he signed this year realigns all of that kuleana under the Department of Agriculture and made a historic $10 million investment in our biosecurity in our efforts to research and fight and eradicate some of these invasive species. There's certainly a lot of work to do. So mahalo to you and all your colleagues at the Invasive Species Councils here on Oahu and across the islands. Mahalo for that. I did get a couple of questions ahead of the meeting. So do you, Member Sakamoto? You asked about an update on the Department of Health data breach that happened last February in 2023. I checked with the Department of Health today. They said that to prevent future incidents, they implemented some additional security measures across their systems that are external to DOH. So any, any of those systems that involve people at other institutions, they updated additional security measures, including password complexity requirements, automatic disabling of inactive accounts. And that was ultimately the root cause of that data breach was this one account that belonged to somebody who used to work somewhere, left in 2021. The account that was compromised that this bad actor got into the system. So they've now instituted automatic disabling of inactive accounts and some requirements around resetting your password regularly. So they continue to monitor. But those are the updates from the data breach that you asked about, Member Sakamoto.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, mahalo to you. About emergency preparedness. I just learned that Member Flotelle, Member Carstensen have a keen interest in emergency preparedness. So I'll be communicating to see what kind of information would be relevant to you folks here and try to bring that to next meeting. Yes. Department of Transportation updates. I know we didn't have a representative here this evening. So, you know, safe roadways are so critical, especially for residents here in Kani Ohe who go back and forth to town, or myself the other way around, right? Lekelike four times a day, up, down, up, down. Member Sakamoto, mahalo to you for your advocacy in this area. See you on the news. So the weekly roadwork page that tells you the roadwork coming up for the weekend and the week following is updated every Friday. Since it's Thursday, I don't have anything to update you on other than to say that that roadwork page is updated every Friday. Hideot.hawaii.gov. But outside of that very specific Uh, but outside of that very specific information for the upcoming week, DOT wanted to report that paving on Likeleke and Kamehameha is complete. However, paving the intersection of Likeleke, Kamehameha, and Kanaoe Bay Drive is going to be scheduled for January, so that they can do it at night to minimize impacts on traffic, but waiting till January to minimize the impact of the lights on the birds. So that's the update from DOT. Other than that, I did take a note that there's some interest in the, uh, uh, Kaila Park update. See what's gonna happen with that. So I'll bring that back to the next meeting, hopefully here sooner than that. But in any case, we'll bring that update back. Um, with that, I just want to mahalo everyone for the warm welcome to my very first Kanaoe Neighborhood Board Meeting and we'll see you guys next month. Mahalo Nui.
I feel like this is a show. It's I suppose, and usually there's no clapping. Well done. Uh, next is the the mayor's representative and then council member Kia Aina, then we're gonna do Q and A of all those folks. So, um, yeah, Andy?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, Cherokee, sorry, Long Day. Um, board members, participants, community, community members, um, just some old business real fast. Board member Sakamoto asked about the border water supplies, federal claims tort status with regard to, um, Red Hill. So, uh, the, uh, the claim filed was $1.2 billion. I think you mentioned $2 billion last, last time. So it's $1.2 billion. I talked to, um, our general manager, Ernie Lau, and he said that, uh, he hasn't received the response yet from the Navy. And, um, there's really nothing to report. Uh, they haven't received, uh, any, any payout or settlement. Uh, so everything's on hold right now with regard to that. So the, the claim would cover, um, all the costs incurred since the 2021 spill and costs that will be incurred in the future. You know, so a projection of that as well. With regard to the fallen tree in Kanaoe Stream, I didn't get an update. So, uh, Chair, uh, I will reach out on my own with regard to, uh, facilities maintenance and if I can get an update, I'll email you an update and report on it again at the next meeting. The, uh, mayor posted his newsletter. I'm not gonna read it because you can go online and read his newsletter for, uh, October 2024. You can find it at www.honolulu.gov backslash mayor, backslash newsletter. And I'll be here for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, next is Vice Chair and Councilmember Esther Kia Aina.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening to everyone. Uh, people may have heard about the city rolling out the, uh, City Grants and Aid uh, program with applications due on November 2nd. Because of, uh, continuing interest by, um, members that it's a very complicated process, we will be having a virtual workshop and Jarrett from my office will be putting in the chat box the link. It's gonna be on, uh, Monday, October 21st at 6:00 PM. So I urge everyone who is interested, um, in, um, exploring, uh, this program to, um, to, to view it. I will, uh, make sure it's recorded so that if anyone misses it, we'll be able to email it to you. Uh, this year to allow for more, uh, applicants to get funding, we are capping it at $150,000. I do note that you have Bill 46, the Empty Homes Tax on your, um, on your agenda tonight. Uh, that bill has passed second reading and we are going to be having an informational briefing on November 8th by the Budget Committee at 9 o'clock, followed by a consideration of the measure, uh, by the Budget Committee on November 19th at 9:00 AM. As many of you know, it will impose a 1% to 3% incremental tax on properties who, um, are not occupied or rented out for more than six months in a year. I myself have had concerns about the impact on local families and I've actually heard throughout my district. And I have, I have said publicly that if my concerns are not addressed, where, uh, a local family who has a second home and they're saving it for their children uh, who currently are on the continent, but they don't want to rent it out, that they should not be subject to this tax. And so just wanted to let you guys know about that. Bill 44, which lowers the, uh, speed limit from 25 to 20 miles per hour, um, around school zones will be, uh, heard again, uh, on October 22nd before the Transportation Committee. I do understand that, uh, we may see an amendment to try to decrease it to 15 miles per hour. And, uh, Jaren has put the bill in the chat box, I believe. And Bill 64 relating to the land use ordinance, uh, I will, I'm gonna, um, finally move it out of committee um, on October 22nd at 9:00 AM. I highly recommend for anybody who's interested in this, I just completed agricultural uses. Next week I will be considering technical amendments to the entirety of the bill. That means all uses. And so, uh, that would be residential uses, commercial uses, industrial uses, and public civic and institutional uses. So highly recommend to anyone who's interested in it to go to, uh, we specifically set up a web, webpage at honolulucitycouncil.org backslash Bill 64. Donald Sakamoto has, uh, raised concerns regarding Ka'amo' Ali'i Stream. We followed up with the Department of Facility Maintenance and they have committed to maintenance of that stream uh, near Koneke Street by the end of the year. Uh, I understand crews are currently working on an area further upstream, uh, because it was in more urgent need of maintenance. Um, and then also on October 15th, just recently, crews were also conducting maintenance to the stream near Ko'ola Golf Course, uh, because, uh, it was another issue that, uh, Donald Sakamoto, uh, had raised. I do know that, uh, Laura had raised an issue with my office today, uh, regarding the Charter Amendment relating to the Department of Emergency Management and she wanted clarification on why exactly it's needed. So I wanted to just explain that while the city ordinance, um, specifies that, um, the, uh, department is subject to civil service laws, the charter does not. So that's the only difference. It's to align the city charter, uh, with that. And then I just wanted to thank all of the constituents who are out there, the residents concerned about Oloha weddings. Uh, I've heard repeatedly from them and I know that DPP is, um, uh, is investigating. The only reason I wanted them to share it with the community is because I want everybody to know about it. Uh, we held a oversight hearing on an illegal lua wedding in Kunea, uh, last month. And so, uh, the, the, the reason I want everyone to know about it is I feel that this is so egregious that I want everybody to know about it. And if we need to go, uh, further than what, uh, our current authorities are, which would be judicial enforcement, I guess I just wanted to be, be apprised because I normally don't, um, you know, there, I get a lot of, um, concerns raised about a lot of things, but I feel that this is egregious and I just wanted everybody to know about it. Because as we move forward and we clamp down, I just don't want people to be surprised. So thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, that is very helpful. Are there, are are there any questions for any of those elected officials who have just spoken? Okay, I see. I see. Andy Rocky, you go first. Uh, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, full disclosure, I'm on the Kanae Christmas Parade Committee. Um, I just want to highlight that a little disappointed to hear that the intersection is going to be paved in January. Um, the parade will pass through mainly these places, Kamia Mia Highway intersection. Uh, so either the city or the state, um, I know you've been responsive before, filling some of the potholes along the road. I know cars are still okay with that, but when you got people walking down the streets, it's a, it becomes a tripping hazard, so on the parade, so I'll bring that up and hope you can support that. Thank you.
If I could, Vice Chair.
Fix the potholes.
Happy to pass that along to DOT.
Uh, any, and, uh, Laura, did you have your hand up too? Go ahead.
Okay, talking about areas that are not, um, or have not been, um, repaved. So I'm not sure if this is city, uh, but all the intersections, Kahuhipa, Cam, Lilipuna, and then Keahala, um, William Henry Road, Cam, those are, all those intersections are good. But what happened to mine? Paleka Road, Cam Highway and Waikulu'a. You guys even skipped my intersection.
DT, that's DTS, not DOT.
Okay, whoever's, please. And then the little, I'm from Paleka, Waikulu'a, Cam, to the next, uh, traffic light.
Hmm.
So bust up. Oh my goodness. Anyway, thank you.
Uh, Dale? Kim? No? Neil?
A general, uh, question, comment to all, um, we have a, uh, we have a speeding problem uh, on this island and on the Windward Side, we, we have a real speeding problem. I mean, I think it's great that HPD and the Marine Corps did something, um, about the H3 issue, which we all know has been an issue for a long time. But, um, that's not the only place where speeding is rampant. And as much as I'm in favor of lowering speed limits from 25 to whatever around schools, the same people that are going to ignore that speed limit at 25 are going to ignore that speed limit at 15. So unless we have some enforcement, and I'm talking even on the Likeleke, how about Cam Highway on the way to Castle Junction? I mean, a couple of speed bumps don't prevent people from really, really speeding. So I, I don't know how we get, um, more enforcement. Maybe we don't have the laws. I don't know. But general, just putting it out there to all y'all, maybe we can do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you for, uh, the presenters, the governor's, uh, um, representative. Uh, I attended August 27th, the, um, uh, Elections Board Commission for the State, they oversee Scott Nivell and elections. And it was a bizarre meeting. The Chair, Mike Curtis, was very rude to the testifiers as well as to the board. So, and again, October 8th, he was very frustrated to see that, but, uh, maybe you, you folks can take a look at it on the governor's side. But, uh, thank you. Concerned, uh, um, Mayor's representative, Andy. Um, we pointed this out before about the cyber attack. I attended the Honolulu Rate Commission meeting on October 8th. Uh, Director Roger Martin said they lost a considerable money on the, um, cyber attack. He said between $380,000 to $400,000. I just, he didn't elaborate. What was the money? Was it Fairbox ratio or something? Could you find out what that was? Because he just said it briefly to the rate commissioners and nobody questioned that. And then Esther, thank you for the report for the, uh, stream by Koneke Street. But there was a pedestrian bridge that I walked on and it's very dangerous because one of the top side of the steps is broken off and, uh, when you walk on it, you can easily trip both ways, uh, and it's not ADSS-able, so if you can take a look at that. But, uh, thank you for what you folks all do. Thank you.
What was the location of that step, please?
Yeah, Koneke Street, there's a, um, pedestrian bridge that goes to the other side of the canal.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a top step. When I went with my cousin, I didn't know he was missing. I almost fell.
Got it. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Andy, did you want to address the, uh?
Yeah, Chair, so the data breach, I'm, I'm not aware of a loss, so I'm gonna check into that. Uh, Mr. Sakamoto, you said $300,000. Uh, my understanding is that the, uh, the breach impacted the, um, third-party, uh, administrator that assists with the collection of revenues. Uh, but I wasn't aware of any, uh, lost fares or anything like that. So I'll check into it and report next time.
He, he just said amount of 380 or so. So I just wanted to
380,000.
Thousand, yeah, I just want, and it was brought up at our Committee for Accessible Transportation. I'm the Chair for the DTS. And the bus, uh, person, uh, brought it up also, yeah.
Okay, I'll look into that. Uh, and just one real quick note, uh, for, uh, the city's portion of Kamia Mia Highway. We have the fully executed contract to do the roadwork, road replacement. And DTS's current target right now is to start the roadwork in the second quarter of calendar 2025. So I'll stay on top of that and keep reporting on it.
Mahalo. Thank you, Andy.
Any other questions? Rocky?
Aloha, Chair. I like the way you run your meeting. You know, all of this condensed into one. Mahalo. First, I'd like to just, uh, thank, um, Councilmember, uh, Kia Aina for bringing this to the community's attention about the illegal business because, like I said, I went to the, um, Akai Watch meeting, but I also was at the Kanaoe Bay Regional Council meeting Tuesday evening and we were discussing the illegal business. And we were wondering where this business was coming from because they're also landing on Moko'olo'e. I took a picture Sunday, lots of people on Moko'olo'e doing snorkeling and that's supposed to be illegal. But thank you for that. But I think this person is breaking both city and state, um, uh, laws and that's, that's good, gotta be looked into. Another thing I'd like to say, mahalo to Senator, um, Jerkio Kaloli for giving us funding for the Halalua Bridge. We're working with Kakao EV, um, they're now clearing out the stream in Halalua. That's, um, actually could use some more funding if anybody out there listening, uh, clear out that stream. But I would like to address, I think the governor's office, did he leave? He left. Oh, here. Because I brought it up at the Kahalua Neighborhood Board meeting about the, um, meters at the, um, state buildings. You know, we go, we get invited. In fact, they ask us to go testify. So we go to testimonies both at the state Capitol, at the Department of Land and Natural Resources, all of the state buildings, your meters. Okay, handicap gotta pay. We don't mind paying, but the point is your meters are fixed. All of the meters, you gotta put your card in, put a two hour. Sometimes those mean, you know, I've got so many tickets. $42 a ticket for Kupunasakas and we could use that $42. We can go buy us a coffee or something, do something about it. It's not fair. We're volunteers. I'm bringing this up because yesterday I met some people from Kahana Valley that got a ticket last week going to the, um, uh, state buildings again. So these people caught the bus from Kahana Valley to Windward Mall, worried about their cards at the Windward Mall. But to think about it, these are handicapped, gotta walk to the bus. They gotta walk to where they're going at the state offices. It's not fair. Something has to be done about it. We don't mind paying for it, but fixture meters, we don't have it. Every time we go get a $42 ticket. Mahalo.
Mahalo for that, Andy. I'll definitely pass it along.
Do you understand the, what she's talking about, the meters being fixed at two hours?
I do, and I've also gotten those tickets, so, eh.
Okay, thank you.
You play any legislative hearings that drag well on beyond the time allotted by the meter, so mahalo for that, Andy.
Thank you, Andy Rocky. Okay, moving forward to the, huh? Yes?
Hello, my name is Michael Lyman. I just have a quick comment for, uh, Councilmember Esther. It says in regards to the settle, the proposed settlement in that Ho'oe shooting. I just hope that she votes against that. Take it to a jury. It should not be, folks should be, not be rewarded for that behavior. That's all.
Mahalo.
Uh, moving on to, uh, elected official senators and representatives, Senator Kioho Kaloli. Senator Hawa. Representative Kitagawa. Are we in session? Representative Matayoshi? Representative Hasi Burdick? Any other representatives that happen to be listening or on the call or here? Okay. That is definitely moving right along. Is there anybody that has any questions or comments or concerns they'd, they'd like to, uh, put into the minutes for any of these representatives? Yes, yes, sir.
Maybe three big, and I've just have one question here. In May, I went to America, I mean, to the mainland. I call them America. I came back in September and I went to Kaiser and I can't cross the street. What happened there? Why did they close that road? I can't make a U-turn there. I, I didn't come to the meetings. I like, no. Why was that done?
Yeah, that's a great, that was, we actually had a discussion about that two meetings ago. And we asked the same thing, what happened? Why did that happen? And what it sounds like to me, the information that I got is when Complete Streets wants to do something, Com- Complete Streets doesn't. And they didn't necessarily come to the board and give us any background on what was gonna happen. It just happened. So, uh, I was just as upset because it ruined my, I used to go to Genki Sushi. I would go in through Windward Mall, go down the backside and go park. Can't do that anymore. So, yeah, I.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, that's not much of an explanation, but when it comes.
I won't leave Kanioe anymore since you had two things when I'm gone. And next thing is, um.
Oh, you have more?
It was one more, one short one. Why don't they buy the golf course, what is that? It's before you hit, uh, the Castle Junction area. Polly, Polly, I'm sorry. Why don't they make that extra lane on the right side? Because everybody's coming to their, they all wanna turn to go up to town. They can't because the light is red and everybody's going straight across. You know, right from the bus stop, you can turn in by the bus stop. Then you can go up the lane. They got all that area there. Who do we talk about making that lane so it can, they'll need to move traffic along there? You know? But I go, you guys understand where I'm talking about, though? Yeah, yeah. You know, open up that lane because people wanna go to town. They can't go nowhere. Traffic is buck, buck all the way back because guys wanna go straight and you can't turn because you can't go nowhere. But you get the space there, the open space there. When I seen them paving, I was all excited because I thought they was gonna do it. But when I came back from America, everything was the same.
Kamehameha Highway and, and, uh, Poli Highway, that's DOT? Yep.
Are they gonna start construction next week?
I, yeah.
I'm gonna find out, Uncle. I've got him stuck in that too, so.
As soon as we get the, uh, Pahia Street crosswalk lights, then that will happen. We've been on that for what, 10 years? Thank you very much. Good ideas. I like that recommendation. Any other comments for our elected officials for the minutes? Hearing none? Moving into board business. Oh, nope, sorry, uh, Community College. Artist, I thought, I saw you there. Are you, oh no!
Call my, uh, for my clothes. It's Tahitian dance night. So, um, I had two announcements from the college. I'm excited that I could actually make it in person tonight. The first is our middle college, which is Halau, which is Halau Haikili. It, um, is a high school operating mostly on the college campus. It's a partnership with Kaileua High School. They're with us three days, two days, Kaileua High School two days, and one day in the community doing service and learning at Aloha Aina agencies, native Hawaiian businesses, social entrepreneurship. They finish high school with the very least, uh, certificate in Hawaiian knowledge innovation and also their high school degree. If they kill it their senior year, they can have their AA done by the time they graduate from high school. Um, if you have relatives that are interested, it's via Kaileua High School. So they would have to apply for a GE to Kaileua High School if they're in Kanioe to go there. And, um, it's targeted primarily for Waimeanalo area, but there are other spaces available at times. So 14 kids per grade. This will be our third class. We right now have freshmen and sophomores. It's been really exciting. You're doing great. Okay, and then my second big announcement is we just recently got a Title III US Department of Ed Native Hawaiian serving grant to serve our men who are located in the middle of the desert in Arizona at the Suaro Corps Civic incarcerated facility. So, um, we're already serving women's youth and then Halava's facility. A lot of our men in Halava, uh, we found were being flown. You'd get no notice till they're half an hour up in the air. And they would just leave in the middle of the semester. Or like last summer, we had a full class, then we had half a class. And we want to make sure that we've engaged, um, all of our possible learners in Hawaii and provided. And, uh, providing a PD now, we're going to be doing our AA Hawaiian studies starting this spring. It's really exciting, using Microsoft Teams because they don't use Zoom in the facilities. Um, so that's just super exciting. And the grant also works with Lee Wards Way and I Moku Campus and Kuauee CC for post-release transfer into the community. So, that's all. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Thank you for not being the chancellor at UH and staying right here at home.
Nobody wants me down there. I'm glad you guys want me here.
Uh, next is board business. We have the, uh, approval of the September 2024 minutes. Everybody's had a chance to see those. Are there any changes or recommendations for those minutes? Their motion to accept? So moved, it's been moved and seconded. What's that?
Donald, Kim told me.
And submitted. Without objection, those minutes are accepted. Thank you very much. Uh, discussion and possible voting for Bill 46 Honolulu Empty House, eh, Empty Homes Tax. We heard a little bit from Councilmember Kiaina. Did anybody want to start the discussion on this? I'll start. Thank you.
I appreciate Esther, uh, Councilmember Esther Kaya's comments about, you know, kupuna who are holding the home for family members. And I think that's, in my experience of getting around neighborhoods, that's a case of many elderly that don't know what to do with their homes, um, can't rent it out or have, don't want to be doing, making money off it or, or whatever, having that option. It's not really, especially for Kanioe. It's not really a commercial thing of investors that are buying something and not doing anything with it. So I, I think it's, there's, they gotta be cautious about how they approach this because I think you're gonna hurt a lot more local residents than, than they help with that tax.
Anyone else? Neil?
I'll take slightly opposing view. I think you're absolutely correct. However, um, there are a significant, um, number of empty homes that are for investment, that are in the process of whatever. Um, I got one right across the street. So, um, I think that there has, we have to be prudent about what we're doing. And so in, as part of the legislation perhaps, we actually need to sort of go, okay, what's the address of this empty home? Who's the owner? Where are they? So, you know, that, that might take a little bit of effort, but we can preserve the sanctity of the local person, okay? And also find out, hey, this person lives in California and this house has been empty for three years. I mean, and it's, I mean, literally diagonally across from my house. So I think there's, I think we need to be respectful of the local kupuna or whomever. But on the other hand, we need to find out people that are actually using this as a, and are they even paying anything other than residential property taxes? Would be even a, a large question. Are they even paying residential aid?
Donald?
Yes, uh, Chair, I, I attended a state, um, Zoom meeting before this meeting. I was talking about the budget for the state legislature. Uh, Representative Bellotti and Representative, uh, I forgot what her name, but they were talking about the same issue about these apartments or homes that are just left alone. So they're, they're looking at that in the legislature. And they also made, mentioned about Bill 46, what the city council is doing. Representative Russo.
Any other comments? I think the, uh, I think the idea is a good one in principle. I think if you own a house and you're not living in it, uh, you should be able to apply for an exemption. If you're living in California and your house has been vacant, it's my house, I own it. Uh, I'm, I'm not renting it out to people that are having weddings and, and I'm, I'm not causing any problems with it. I should have an exemption for my home. So it shouldn't be a blanket thing. And it sounded like Esther said that it wasn't going to be and, and consider, uh, kupuna, uh, consider all those other sorts of things. And, uh, I think an exemption would be in order. That way somebody can look at the exemption and say, no, you've got, you know, this is, you're obviously doing this for profit. And so no exemption for you. Wait a second, that didn't make any sense. Thanks. It's, it's close, yeah, sorry. It's 8:30.
Well, I have kind of mixed feelings about this because it just seems wrong to tax a person's private property for whatever they want to use it for. If they want to keep it empty, so be it. You paid for it. You're paying property tax and so on. And for us to be.
So what about the guy who runs the wedding thing? He pays property taxes on his place.
He's violating all kinds of laws there. So I mean.
So isn't there, isn't there, uh, isn't there a regulation for being able to have a, a, a short-term and long-term type of rental situation?
I think that's what they've put in place for the short-term rentals and the VRBOs and those. But those are businesses. This, these are, I don't know, it just doesn't sit right with.
I know what you're saying. I, I, I get that view. I totally do. And at the same time, I get it where there's lots of, uh, people that abuse the privilege of having a property and then have people moving in there for two weeks, for two weeks, for two weeks, and changing the persona of a neighborhood.
Right, yeah. I mean, I think the city's addressing that now, but is there a way to incentivize people to rent it out? You know, for more, like, long-term versus taxing them in some way and then, I don't know.
No, that's not a, I, I don't know, Andy, can we throw some money in the pot and incentivize homeowners that rent their house? But you have to rent it to a certain, to a certain, uh, demographic? I don't think that.
It just.
Sorry, take that back. That's, that's a, that's a constitutional issue.
Yeah, you gotta, uh, treat people the same, you know, whether they're residents or non-residents, that's the theme.
Can I have a second round on this? Um, so one of the things I kind of asked around is also, you know, if a kupuna's holding on a house and there's all these restrictions on short-term rentals or long-term rentals, what, what are the issues? And they gotta pay taxes on, um, you know, or the G, GT tax, they're renting all these things that pile on, like, forget, I'm not gonna rent, right? So they keep it empty. But, um, you know, we got, we probably got some homes with maybe one or two bedrooms that are available and they're empty because, hey, what do we do with it? Um, you know, Winter Community College, I think there's students here that could use some housing. Um, there could, others that are looking for places. Is there a way to offer incentives or credits for people who can do that? And especially for local residents. If you have a long-term residence established here and you, you can offer that, can we incentivize? It's not treating people differently, but it's also, um, providing something for people to make available for the community to do something. That's kind of, that's, thanks.
Any more discussion?
Uh, just to add to all the conversation, um, well, first off, I'll say born and raised in Kanioe. I don't know how anybody has an empty ho, an extra home right now. Um, if you are a resident, um, it, it doesn't seem very, well, I'm, I, I just, it seems, it blows my mind to think that just a typical resident, a local resident from Hawaii has an extra home in these times and is keeping it empty. Um, that being said, if there is that truly happening, I do look forward to hearing the amendments that, uh, Esther is looking at, uh, putting in. Um, and then, uh, my other comment to these other incentivized programs, I do think there might be ways that would have to be like via, say, if we're talking about Winter Community College and, you know, helping the students, it'd be via the college. Um, you know, those other routes of verifying whatever it may be. But, yeah, so just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Uh, does anyone want to make a motion? Where? I see a, Sarah, is that your hand up there?
Yes, it's Sarah Catherine. And if you can guarantee me that I won't have damage to my house, my hule, um, because it's been rented out to somebody else that, or students. Um, my mom gave me a house. I inherited it. It's vacant because I don't want to worry about, uh, damage to it when I'm not there. You know, I need a place to stay when I come. And, uh, eviction is difficult and expensive and long problems. When the house was finally, uh, vacated, uh, we went in and they had trashed the bathrooms. The tubs were broken, the sinks were yanked off the wall. I'm very scared to have that happen again.
Thank you very much, Sarah Catherine. Appreciate that input. Uh, so we've, we've heard a little bit. Um, is there a motion to close the discussion? And seconded without objection? And does anybody want to make a motion relating to this bill? Hearing none? Let's move on to board committee reports. Thank you very much for the discussion. Um, are there any board committee reports that need to be made? All right then, our next regular board meeting will be Thursday, November 21st. Vice Chair, you're gonna have the, uh, the con for that one. Hi.
Can, can you recognize me? I didn't come up when community concerns because last month you told me it was an announcement, not really a concern.
What do you, what do you have to announce?
I have to announce that, uh, the, there's a joint, uh, Ko'olau Loa CERT exercise at, um, Christ Church Uniting, organized by Kaileua. Uh, Kanioe, Kahalua's attending. Uh, we're hoping for Waimeanalo to attend. Uh, Ulus going up, so going up to, uh, Ko'olau Loa as well as Ko'olau Poco. Um, and if any of you would like to come and see what a community emergency response team does, uh, will be at Christ Church Uniting, that's right past Castle or Adventist Hospital, okay? Uh, and we'll be conducting search and rescue, triage, medical communications, uh, everything that would be involved in community emergency response team. We would love to have survivors, okay? We have, uh, we call you, all right, not casual cheese or anything, uh, survivors. Uh, and we could work on you and save you and bring you back to the community. Yes. On November 2nd, sorry, Saturday.
Yes, Donald.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mary, for the, uh, update. Uh, I understand Esther Kaya was at your last meeting, uh, she had ten years.
Yes, yes, she did.
How, how did that go? Well?
Uh, it went well. I think, um, she learned a lot about, uh, what certs do and the issues that we face. Uh, and I was very happy to hear, uh, that Dale and Neil are having a meeting, uh, with the governor's rep. I have some notes to, as a matter of fact, about that. But it went, I think it went well with Esther. But there's a tremendous amount to do it. Like, everybody in this community should know that if anything goes down, you think you got a problem in the Carolinas or Florida, you got it here as well. And nobody come in to help you for. And nobody come in to help you for days. Okay, even weeks, they tell us.
Okay, so thank you for the Halloween, uh.
I'll scare, I like to scare you. I'm such a, you know.
Well, then, then, if you can riddle me this, I want a concrete pad with eye bolts cemented into those pads with two tractor trailer containers bolted and wired down to these concrete pads where inside would be chainsaws, communications equipment, uh, cots, things that we would need to use. What's the feasibility of something like that?
It's very feasible if you got around $100 thou or you got somebody that can donate. And we do, we're working on people to donate, uh, the pods, the containers. Um, uh, but places, that's where the community comes in and that's what we're working on.
So not a government, government, not government sponsored?
No, 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 this is community.
Okay, very good.
But give me $100 and I'll do it for you.
Okay.
Chair, one key point to bring up on that is there are grants available, but you need a grant writer to effectively, uh, submit. So that's one of the challenges that we're.
So that might be something that, that, I don't know if the grants in kind that Esther was talking about would, would lead into something like that? Might it?
Yes, to answer your question, but we need a grant writer.
Okay. Were you volunteering for that service?
I don't know how to do it. So if someone in the community has.
Okay, we'll give you an extra two minutes.
I just did one with the Paulina Fund and I did it for the Kaneohe, um, the KK, I'm sorry, the Windward, uh, Emergency Preparedness Fair that we do, um, every, uh, pre-hurricane season. So I just did one with the Paulina Fund, but only for like fourth thou. So I could pay.
Thank you. Continuing on, thank you for that announcement. Continuing on with the regular announcements, uh, our next meeting is November 21st. Vice Chair, you got the con. Uh, elementary, it's gonna be here at Ben Parker, same time. And that is it.
Chair. I just, I think last meeting we, um, voted on participating in the Connie Christmas Parade. We did. And I guess, is there a point of contact? The applications are open right now and it's due by October 31st.
That will be before we have the next meeting? Can you put in for us? And does it cost?
I can, but I cannot be a part of the parade. But I'll, I'll put it in. There's, there's actually no costs because we're a government, we're a quasi-government organization.
Are you, are you the grand marshal?
I am running the operation.
This meeting, this meeting is adjourned?
Yes.